Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. I'm gonna call the November 1st meeting of the Lancaster City Planning Commission to order 5:32 PM on November 1st. Item number two, approval of the meeting minutes of the October 4th, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion a second.
We have a motion and a second, approval of the meeting minutes of the October 4th, 2023 meeting. Moving on to item number three, our subdivision and land development. Our first item, we are going to hear a time request for 259 South Ann Street. I would like to welcome whoever would like to present that plan up to the stage. I'm so sorry, bear with me one second. We're gonna back up. Thank you, Andrew. Back us up to item number two, everybody. I jumped ahead here. We had a first and a second on the meeting minutes, but I did not go through the rule call. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all right, all in favor, meeting minutes are approved. Now, we'll go back to item number 3A. Sorry, I was getting ahead of myself here.
Darlene Byrd, South Ann Street. We're just asking for a time extension for our hub project. We added an apartment up top a third floor, and that was not in the previous plans. So, we had to go back to zoning, back to getting a historical review. When we first asked for an extension, we didn't have finances. We kinda like this was our first development plan, and we were so excited that we were so ahead of the game, but we did not have our finances in order. So, we now have our finances in order, and we really don't believe it's gonna take two years, but when we asked for an extension before, we didn't realize we could've extended it out further and only paid that $300 fee once. So, we wanna make sure we were covered this time, so we put two years.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from my planning commission members? Hearing none. Are there any public comments? Do I have a motion to move the plan forward?
I motion that we approve the time extension request for 259 South Ann Street for the minor plan.
Great, we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Well, good luck, number two. Moving on, we have an introductory presentation for Katherine Hershey School for the Early Learning Center. I'll welcome that team up.
Good evening. My name is Ben Morton. I'm the Senior Project Manager with RGS Associates, and we are the land planning and civil engineering consultant for this project. Have a number of project team members with me this evening, most of whom are not gonna speak unless there's a specific question that they can help answer, but I'll take a moment to introduce them, and then we'll go through some of the mission and background of Katherine Hershey Schools for early learning, and then I'll come back up to walk you through the plan where it is right now. As was mentioned, this is an introductory presentation, so not for action or voting tonight, but hoping to share this with you and then get both your feedback and answer any immediate questions that you have. But with our team just going kind of in order across here, we have Scott Dietrich, who's with JSC Law Offices, serving as legal counsel for the project. Bill Woss, who's the project manager with Milton Hershey School. Then Gary Weaver, who's the project architect from Tippets Weaver. Tashiko Nelson, who's with Katherine Hershey Schools. Rebecca Bennettum, Senior Director of Programming with Katherine Hershey Schools. And then Bill McKelvey, who's the Facility Manager for CHS. And with that, I'll welcome Rebecca up to start off the presentation.
So, as Ben said, I'm Rebecca Bennettum, the Senior Director of Programs, and I just wanted to give some information and background on CHS and what we are and how we can service families and children in the area. So, Katherine Hershey Schools for Early Learning in Lancaster City will provide full-time, non-residential, year-round care and education to children, birth through age five, with all costs covered for qualifying families. CHS is a subsidiary of Milton Hershey Schools and is part of a $350 million initiative to initially develop six early childhood centers in Pennsylvania to serve children from under-resourced and overburdened backgrounds. We actually recently opened our first one in Hershey. CHS follows a whole child and family success approach designed to provide quality education and integrated family services in order to support children in the classroom and at home. Enrolled children will receive nutritious meals, in some cases, transportation, and all personal items at no cost to families. We cover all the costs. Each center has an onsite family success center, which serves as a safe place for families to come. They can develop desired skills, they complete goals with the family's success advocates, and both CHS family success staff and outside service providers are there for them. Family success advocates will connect families to essential tools and some things that they can have resources related to housing, legal, parenting, physical and mental health, personal and professional support, finance, employment, and when their children are ready to transition to kindergarten, they also will help support the family in that transition. All CHS staff and teachers actually go through a nearly year-long paid professional development program that sets them up for success in their day-to-day work with children and families and helps them to create that high-quality education for them. We have received positive feedback from the community, both at meetings and while engaging with other entities, including Mannheim Township School District and School District of Lancaster, as well as organizations with common goals, including Lancaster City Alliance, Colby's Family Services, and the Factory Ministries. So, I will let Ben give a project overview.
So, the project site is at the southwest corner of East Walnut and North Plum Streets at the site that was stalled redevelopment at one point, known as Tobacco Avenue, and then as Best Engine Works. And here we have our existing conditions plan. I'll note that we've continued to use some of the building numbering that developed from that project, so you'll see in the existing condition, there's a Building 1, 2, and 4. The original Building 3 was demolished as a part of that earlier project. Building 1 was substantially renovated with parking in the lower level installed along with some ground-level office, and then offices on the upper level. Some other key elements that were installed already on the site include an underground stormwater management facility that's in the center of the site, which we are planning to repurpose to meet the updated requirements now in force. And then another unique situation here is actually the northern portion of this site and neighboring properties was at one point part of a railroad right-of-way, which is part of what's causing some of the angles you're seeing in the structures and areas where there are buildings versus not. And subsequently, a sewer main was installed in that area, and as part of the prior project, a portion of that main on this property was relocated through the site to create a space for building along Walnut Street. And so, that's running through the site now, and we will have some changes to that public sewer main that's on private property as well. So, kind of a key part of what we've done here is work to stitch together the buildings to create a cohesive whole that creates a safe and secure environment to meet all of those program goals that Rebecca laid out. And to do so, there's a new Building 3 that helps to create the street, complete the street edge along Walnut Street, and then a pedestrian bridge that connects that building to an addition to Building 4 on its eastern face. That ties together where the various daycare and early learning elements are housed, and then Building 1 will continue to have some interior parking on the ground level, as well as the family success center, which is connected by covered walkways on the exterior. I'll note that in Building 4 itself is where the main entrance for children and families will be, as well as classrooms and office space. And then, the staff and children will be able to use pedestrian bridge to get to the upper level of Building 3 where there will be outdoor play space, which connection to the outdoors is a key element that CHS is trying to bring to its projects. From there, it connects over to Building 2, which on its upper level has the Innovation Lab, as well as Gross Motor Skills, kitchen services to, you know, feed the 80 staff and 150 children is in the lower level, and the lower level of Building 3 has some ground-level parking that's somewhat enclosed. Site access, there are three access drives in the existing condition. What we're proposing to do is repurpose the Walnut Street access drive to be enter-only and for be limited to families driving in, as well as the shuttle services that CHS will provide for a number of the children. Then, the North Plum Street Drive, which was reconstructed as part of the earlier project, will allow those vehicles to exit and then be a full-service driveway for the limited number of employees who will park in Building 1, as well as for access for deliveries and trash to get to the loading dock area that's on the south side of Building 2. There's another existing access drive right now to Tobacco Avenue, which is a common alley. That we are closing, both due to concerns about speeding cars cutting through, which is something some of the neighbors on Tobacco Avenue have also expressed concern about. And then, there's also some significant grade change between Tobacco Avenue and the interior of the site, and what we've done, as compared to what you'd see if you went out and saw the site in its current state, we've really flattened that area in front of Building 4 so that we're creating a much more accessible drop-off area, an easier place for everyone to navigate inside the site, and we really needed to disconnect that from the Tobacco Avenue area. For pedestrians, you know, children and families can access the site from Walnut Street along the access drive and going under the pedestrian bridge, and then also from Fulton Street on the west side of Building 1. There's a stepped route that goes under the canopy, and then there's also an accessible route that gets you to the side of Building 4. There's an employee entrance and might be used for other types of evening gatherings at the north side of Building 2 that relates to some off-site parking, and a couple of other ancillary entrances along Plum Street. In terms of parking, 100 spaces are required. We have 62 on the site, with 36 of them dedicated to families doing drop-off and pickup. The remaining required spaces for employees are being provided off-site in a 50-space parking area at 226 Ann Street that's just to the east of what you can see on this plan. And back in the late spring, we received zoning hearing board approval for a special exception to allow that off-site parking. Bicycle parking is being provided as required in relation to both the Building 2 and Building 4 entrances, and in addition to the loading dock I had mentioned of Building 2, we have a trash enclosure and loading dock to serve Building 4 located on Tobacco Avenue. And just before you switch, and then in the center of the site, while not particularly detailed yet, there's an additional large area of outdoor space that will be enclosed and part of the secure and safe perimeter that will be accessed through Building 3. There'll be a STEM garden, which has been developed for some of the other centers, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to apply that to this site. Additional playground space and also outdoor classrooms that, some of which will be covered, so there's an opportunity to be outside even when the weather isn't perfect. Then, we can go to utilities. Just a couple of highlights here that, you know, you'll see where that existing underground stormwater system is located. We are reworking a lot of the conveyance on the site so that we meet the more stringent interpretations of capturing new impervious than when the site was first permitted, and getting to the 1 1/4-inch stormwater volume management. And then, highlighted in red is the section of the public sewer main that will be reconstructed. In the prior configuration, we would've ended up with a couple of manholes beneath the pedestrian bridge, which would make future reconstruction that much more difficult, and we needed to shift it somewhat east to move it away from the Building 4 addition. And we're working through a satisfactory easement agreement with the city to make those changes and have the pedestrian bridge in that location. Lastly, just wanted to touch on street trees and the streetscape. Walnut Street is a key corridor in the streetscape district, so it will be getting the full treatment of brick banding, pedestrian scale fixtures, structural soils adjacent to the trees. North Plum and East Fulton Street are getting sidewalk reconstruction where needed to meet the requirements for width and accessible cross slopes and the like. In terms of street trees, we are seeking modification. It's from one section, but covers a few different items. I think it's probably pretty clear that on East Fulton Street, we don't have any trees proposed and are looking to do a payment in lieu of planting because the sidewalk itself is only five feet wide, and so we can't provide both an accessible route and the trees. On Plum Street, the, at the southern end, there's also another ADA ramp and building projection that exists that prevent additional trees there. We have one existing tree that we're planning to keep, and then through coordination with the former urban forester Cody Kiefer, we're planning to cluster the trees on the north half of that site, or that street. It does result in, because of the access drive and a utility pole near it on Plum Street, we can't meet the maximum of 50-foot separation, so that's one aspect of the modification. And on that street, we'll have seven new trees out of 10, I believe, that are required. And then, getting to Walnut Street, I think, I had mentioned some of the streetscape elements, but you know, this is an area where we saw an exciting opportunity to really create a destination at this location coming into the city and marry, deviate from some of the cadence of street tree design to try to highlight elements of the architecture, and if you wanna go to the next slide. What we are doing here, and I think it's worth noting that across the street of Lancaster Brewing, you know, you also have these expansive rain gardens and a plaza area, and actually no street trees at all on that frontage. And so, what we're trying to do here is frame an actual space that kind of opens up, gives you some visual pause, even if you're driving through the area. You know, helps show off the face of Building 2 and that entrance, but also on Building 3, there are multiple panels that right now just have a single image on them of Katherine Hershey, but are intended to be a place to have a historical narrative that will be visible, you know, in more detail when you're walking on the street, but will also be something that people can see as they're driving by. And, you know, in order to achieve this, though, and have visibility from the main thoroughfares, we're clustering the street trees at the west end and providing six of the eight, with two being a payment in lieu of planting. Again, the trees are clustered closer together than normal, just 10 feet, but that is something that we've had approved on some, at least one other project, and another it seems to be passing muster with the city arborists. So, with that, be happy to entertain questions and also hear your general feedback and comments.
Thank you. Do any of my planning commission members have any questions for Mr. Morton?
Yeah. I'm actually curious to have a little bit of discussion about the entrance, the vehicular entrances to the site. And I understand part of what I'm asking is to have a conversation with one of your adjacent property owners. I do have a little bit of hesitation about having the two drive, entrance or exit open back up. I know one of them is like totally fenced off, but I think the other one beside Building 1 has some slight use. Is that correct?
The one on Plum Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that one, when Building 1 was occupied, that one was fully in use. And, yeah.
Okay. And I, so I realize the Plum Street one is maybe a little bit harder of a point to push, but it would be great if there could potentially be an agreement made between the adjacent property owner and this new owner to potentially use the one entrance. I know there's some weird grade changes around there, but just to eliminate having two potential vehicular exits from the road. I especially get concerned because of cyclists. So, that would be, in my vision, great. But then also, I would maybe even encourage you guys to reconsider closing off to Tobacco as far as the Plum Street one goes, 'cause I just generally have hesitations about exits on the busy roads, especially 'cause those are prime frontages down the line. And if Tobacco Avenue could be utilized as your exit, I think that might be better for less impactful accident potential, but that's just my opinion. That all said, I'm glad to see Hershey School developing here. Actually, my great-grandfather went to Milton Hershey Industrial School back in the day, when it was still industrial school, and so I believe in you guys' mission, and this is definitely needed in the community. That's all.
I would love to piggyback a little bit off of what Tony was talking about with the pedestrian slash bicycle access. Since there are no vehicles parking on Walnut right now in front of that property, but we do have the bicycle lane that is there, can we work with the city or whoever would be in charge of that to put a more permanent curbing there to add a little bit of safety? I know this is not your conversation, but something we should be looking at is the city to just encourage safer areas there, so it's a little bit more visible. But my main question actually is related to Building 2 and Building 3. On Building 2, are you gonna have to replace the roof on that, or do you have enough there right now where it looks like you can continue with what's there?
That might be a Gary.
It might be. I'm just thinking about.
I know where the water is going when it leaves the roof.
That's where we're going with where the water goes in general, if it's adding to or taken away.
Yeah, so what happens in Building 2 currently is it is a sloped roof. There's a peak in the center of that, and it sheds both to the east and to the west. We are going to have a cricket where that roof meets the new addition. That's the connection between Building 2 and Building 3, and we will be collecting that water on the west side of the building and bring it to underground stormwater system.
And the playing surface for Building number 3, the garage and playing surface, what materials are you going to be using for that?
Materials for the deck?
The deck, yes.
Yeah, so the parking garage is gonna be constructed with a steel structure with concrete plank on top of it, and then on top of that, we have a play, we actually have a pedestal system and then a play deck that goes on top of that. That also will drain to, on that level drains to roof drains and then is carried to the interior courtyard space, and then we also have some roof structures on top of that that are sort of connected pieces. There's a sort of pergola piece up there, and those areas also collect water and shed towards the stormwater management system in the center of the site.
That's encouraging. It sounds like an overall, I guess, loss in the amount of, like, a gain of pervious pavement in a sense, right? We're gaining more water retention through the stormwater, so that sounds great. Thank you.
I'm just a little curious. What research, what community did you do, research in the entire city, or just that area of the city for what the need was for this kind of school? So, just talk to School District of Lancaster and Mannheim Township School District?
Would you please come up to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you.
The Milton Hershey School Board actually went through this and looked into the need for early childhood education and, you know, truly just determined that this area would be a good opportunity to not only use the existing infrastructure, but to also give back to the community around that area. But, I mean, ultimately, the CHS will not only, you know, provide families and children with these services, you know, with families traveling to the center, but in some cases, there will be some transportation offered.
Okay, thank you.
So, I actually have just a couple more questions, probably related to her as well. From a, the family success advocates that you were speaking about earlier, are they provided specifically for the children, or do they actually go for like the children and their families as well? So, if like my, you know, the mom needed help, you would? Okay, thank you. And when you look at the area of the city that you would be serving, or maybe not the city, what, I guess, what region would, from, where would you get the children to come to this facility?
So, to be eligible for the program, I mean, not only is it with age and income, but it's also in the family's ability to participate in the program. Meaning, if a family is traveling to Lancaster City on a daily basis, they may also utilize the services at CHS Lancaster City.
Okay, interesting. And approximately, how many families or children will you serve at this?
Up to 150.
150, you did say that earlier. Thank you. Okay, and Ben, Mr. Morton, a question for you, please. The, I think I see the arrows, but I'm having a hard time. Walnut Street is only an entrance, correct? You cannot exit on?
That's correct.
Okay. And how do you see emergency services traveling through this?
So, we actually had two meetings with the fire marshal on site to talk through questions of especially the large vehicle access, and one, we've designed it so that both clearance under the pedestrian bridge satisfies the International Fire Code and is 13 feet 6 inches, which is well in excess of what the largest fire apparatus will be, and we have provided the city. And we have provided the city with turning templates showing that those larger vehicles can go through the core of the site. The fire marshal indicated that there would be, you know, sort of a broader plan put in place, depending on which building is where the alarms are, but that's actually something that they do take these plans and set up where they would like everything to be located. There's a main fire pump in building one now that will continue to serve the fire suppression systems throughout and a fire department connection at that corner, which is very close to a fire hydrant down at Fulton and Plum. And then there will be additional FTCs on the site, one that's remote from building four, but serving the stand pipes in that building that would allow a pumper truck to set up on Tobacco Avenue. And then also on building two, and perhaps on building three, but certainly on building two. But I believe all of that was meeting their satisfaction there for really flexibility to come into the site in any way that they needed to.
Okay, so, but that sounds like that was flawfully considered and taken care of, and that's what I was wondering. And your trash collection, I see that is, that would, do you envision the trash truck coming in off of North Plum Street and what backing into that to pull?
Yes.
And off of East Fulton Street, one other, this is my last question. Off of East Fulton Street, you talked about an entrance. Is that a pedestrian entrance, or can you access that through a vehicle? Right there would be, okay, so then that would take you into?
Yeah, that's just, that's a pedestrian entrance, but there is a gate there at that perimeter.
So do you have to be buzzed into that gate? How do you get through that gate?
I think we're still working through that question. Or no, now that I'm thinking about it, during the day, those gates will be open, actually. It's really more about some of the perimeter security in the evening at that point. And then when it comes to actually having security within the buildings, it's, you know, they're limited controlled entrances to go in.
So somebody could technically walk from Walnut Street then over to East Fulton Street through the?
Yes, I believe so.
Interesting. Well, it sounds like an amazing project. I know that there is a humongous need for early childhood education and advocacy programs in our community specifically. The School District of Lancaster has, you know, an awful lot of poverty and low income and homeless children. So I know that this will definitely help out. So, you know, congratulations, and you should sleep really well at night feeling really good about what you're doing. Do we have any other questions?
Yes. When do we foresee this facility being open?
What's our date now?
They're expected, all three of the Lancaster County locations are expected to begin opening in 2026.
2020. Thank you.
Two, I hope, quick questions. So the off-site parking, you said, is North Ann Street?
But although it's access from Walnut Street, but the address is North Ann, but the access drive is on Walnut Street.
Okay, so folks will be walking along Walnut Street.
Yeah, yes.
And then for the onsite trees, are you, are you removing onsite trees or are you replacing, or what's the onsite?
There are a few, yes, onsite trees that were installed as part of the prior project in the parking lot islands, and those are, many of those are being removed just because of the way that the site interior is being reconfigured. But we're certainly, as shown on these plans, providing the, I believe, we're one tree in excess of the parking lot tree requirements, but as we develop the STEM garden area, we'll be looking to add some additional trees in that area, just as part of the design.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
I actually want to follow up, one quick question about the trees regarding East Fulton Street. We have had a couple newer developments come in, one, an alley or a side street like East Fulton, and they don't have the ability to put a tree in because of the width of the sidewalk and just the restrictions of the built area. But if you look, East Fulton Street, just up the road slightly, there is some residential housing, so I'm not sure, you know, have you explored all options to green up that space just a little bit to make it more aesthetically pleasing as well as, you know, adding some environmental impact?
You're talking about doing something still on this, on the north side of the street, or?
Well, I know that you can't, you said that you're not able to put trees in, but this, this continues to come up, you know, in discussion, that when, an alley like this isn't conducive to a tree, it just can't accommodate it, correct? But are there other solutions that we can think of outside of a tree? Is there like some green, you know, like, you know, like a storm, maybe not a stormwater feature, but some type of greenery, like gardening plots, or not a garden plot, but, you know, something that we could do to, I think, add some green to that space so it's not such concrete jungle? You know, with the use of what you're doing, there's a lot of, you know, people coming to it right across the street. There are a couple, just a small row of houses. You know, I don't know if there's any outside of the box solutions that we could think of that could add some, like, a bit of aesthetic value to that and make it, you know, nice for the residents in the local community.
I got something outside of the box. Really outside of the box here, actually. So Mr. Kajo, could you pull up the Google view real quick again? Could you, with the aerial, though? Okay, because I was going to say it would be interesting if some like massive oak trees could be planted in the backyards of the south side of East Fulton Street, but under some sort of agreement, because then the shade would at least carry over to the north side, but it would obviously take a couple decades for that to work out. But that being said, it's still, it's still a good oak tree if you can get it in the ground. But that's pretty outside the box. All right.
Heard the question, we'll need to look at that, and I think, you know, it's certainly in these areas where we're right around the five feet, we've really struggled with what to do while also meeting accessibility, but certainly a conversation that can happen to understand what's possible.
I mean, we as a committee have had conversations on how we could overcome or what are some, you know, solutions, and we've yet to figure it out ourselves. But as this continues to come up, it would be interesting to see if there is some solution that we could come up with. Just a thought. All right, do we have any other questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We're going to do a second introductory presentation. This, we will not, also not take any action on this evening. So any, the folks who would like to present, bear with me, 118 North Prince Street.
So, good evening. Is that loud? Craig Smith, I'm a principal with RGS Associates, and this is Kirk Sears, who's a partner in the project and ownership of the property. And like Nicole said, we're here as an introduction to this project, no action tonight, and really to get some feedback and answer any of the planning commission's questions is where we're at. So this property is located on, between Prince Street and Water Street. It's about 0.35 acres, just north of what was once poor, and then I believe the beer wall at one, at one point in time, so it's adjacent to that, that property, if you can picture that. So we're in the CB1 Central Business Zoning District, and currently what exists on the property, there's a building that's on the Prince Street side that has some frontage on the south side. There's a building that exists on the Water Street side that, again, on the south side of the, of the property. And then the majority of the north side of the property is really a parking lot at this point in time. So it's really largely impervious, covered property that, that, that exists. So what's being proposed here is a seven-story building that will accommodate 72 apartment units. And along with that, there is some retail space, some commercial space that's proposed as well. So I'll start up in the northeast corner, and this is a little bit hard to follow because of the color scheme. However, if you follow some of the lines, and maybe Mandelli can outline it, on the northeast side, there's some retail space that is delineated by, forget about, it's the blue, but there's a line that exists that kind of goes across, if you go to left, left, down, right, left. So that corner of the building is really the retail space on the first floor that accesses Prince Street. And then if you go to the other side, directly across on the south side, on Water Street, there's a similar amount of retail space that's proposed along Water Street with an entrance there. And again, this is retail space and about the same size, and if you look at that L shape, that's really what the retail space involves here. And then we have the rest of the building are the apartments. One of the challenging things about this project, again, if you're familiar with the site, the Prince Street side over here is about six feet higher than the Water Street side. So we had to really take that into account from a design perspective, and the architect had to do the same. So what's being proposed is entry into the Prince Street side where the retail is, the main entrance to the apartment project and apartment community is the triangle that's, I'll call it center, in, on the Prince Street side that goes into a lobby space. And then there are actually seven one-unit apartments, studio apartments that are on that lower level. One of the things we had to do was go to the zoning hearing board, and we obtained a variance to allow the residential units on essentially what's, what's the street level of the project. And understanding, you know, retail space is actually on the street frontage, these are all interior units in the area where it says proposed building, there are seven studio apartments that are on that level. So we obtained the variance to allow those units to exist on the street level. As you go west, there's a dashed line that jags in and out. That's actually a drop in the architecture, and so the building drops at that line, and then we get down to the retail space level on the first floor. And that's, again, about, about six feet lower than Prince Street. On the northwest corner then, there's a lot of service that's happening there, utilities, trash collection, and things that happen back of house, if you will, on that northwest corner. As you go up the other levels, there are 12 units that are proposed on the second level. There are 14 units proposed on the next level, 14 on the fourth level, 14th on the fifth level. And then there are 11 what's called duplexes on the top level, and actually, these, when I say duplexes, these are actually two-story units. So they're on the top level, which, you know, adds up to the seven stories that we're talking about. So in total, there are 72 units. 56 of those are one-bedroom apartments, 16 are two-bedroom apartments. And we're going to show, I'm going to show the architect's 3D concepts, it makes it a little bit more, you know, we can understand it a little, a little bit better. One of the very unique things about this project is we're proposing what we're calling a pass-through park. So this is on the south side of the, of the property, and we're proposing this to be essentially pavers. As you go from Prince Street to Water Street and you come across, there's a door location that's that triangle on the south side of the building, that's a secondary entrance for the apartment residents. And then as you continue west, in the middle section there, there's a, there's a ramp that occurs, again, because of the grade change, and then it goes down into Water Street. We're proposing that there's going to be a public access easement that's on top of this, so this will allow access for the public. It's going to be owned and maintained by the property owner, however, there'll be access for, for the public to utilize this space and make that pedestrian connection between Prince and Water Streets. On the west side of the building, there's actually on the third floor, and again, you'll see this in the three-dimensional model, on that north, on that southwest corner, the third floor actually extends over the park. So if you can picture this, the pedestrians would walk underneath that third story in that section that Mandelli is outlining there to allow the pedestrians to access that. Couple other things that are being worked on by the architect, in that same location, there's arches that are currently there that exist. These are not historic in nature, however, technically not historic, however, a portion will be saved and utilized as an entry into this public space, which will be a nice element. And on the Prince Street side where the building exists, there's a portion of the building facade along Prince Street and along the south, and that's, that's going to be saved. And when I say saved, essentially the skin, so it maintains the character of what's around it. The building itself behind it will be demolished. There have been several meetings with the, between the architect and the Historical Commission that's already happened, and they worked through a lot of this stuff already. There's an intent in December here to submit, I'll call it a final submission to the, to the Historical Commission for approval, we intend, and again, in December. So there's been a lot of time and effort into the historical component of the project as well. From a street tree standpoint, on Prince Street, the requirement is to propose four trees, which we are intending to do. There currently exists a tree out there that's fairly large, however, it's a calorie pear, it's really not a, a nice tree, street tree, if you want to put it nicely. So, and because of the logistics of the construction, we can't save that tree. We are proposing the four street trees with all the structural soils, with all the, you know, things associated with tree wells and that type of thing in accordance with the city's requirements. On the west side for Water Street, again, similar to the previous presentation, there's limited available space, it's essentially the sidewalk, and then the building's going to occur right there on the right of way. So we are proposing a modification or fee in lieu of street trees on that particular side, on the Water Street side. One of the challenges is, if you, again, if you look at the triangles, we have entry into some public spaces, especially there on the retail side where Mandelli's cursor is. So we have things associated with accessibility, you know, getting to that, to that access, the way the door functions, and having enough space to work with. In this case, we really don't have the space to, to plant trees, and there's also a low-voltage overhead electric line that's intended to stay as a part of this. There's, there's some challenges along Water Street. It's going to be consistent with what's on Water Street, but again, we propose the fee in lieu of, so that the city can use that in another instance. So, you can flip there, that's fine, yeah. Moving along. So these are renderings from Alexander Studio, who's the architects on the project. And this is really the Prince Street side where you can see, again, the building is essentially in front of where the street trees are. The upper level, you can see the duplex apartments, which is going to be a taller type of a unit, kind of a unique unit. And then obviously, you're going to have the commercial space on this front corner. And if you kind of flip through a couple of these, Mandelli, and kind of get a sense of. Yeah, so this is on the Water Street side, and again, the intent is to preserve some of that arch character that was, that currently exists there. And so if you look at the one closest to the bottom of the screen, that would be the entry point into the public park space. And again, it's a nice visual on the corner there where you have retail space and the ability to visualize kind of that public area. And then you can see where the bump out of the building is, there's, there's an area of the third floor and up that's going to extend over the public park or the pass-through park space. And if you get down to the next one, so this is also on Water Street, and it's just a little bit different vantage point, you can see where the arches would be proposed. And then I think there's one more that's in here, where you kind of get a sense of the entry from Prince Street into that pass-through park. And if you look on the left side, you can kind of see that where the trees are and how that extends out. You'd have a walk under where the third floor is on the back section there. And then you can see essentially the corner of the building that, that's on the corner right there, that's where the skin of the building is going to be preserved from a, from an aesthetic standpoint. So that's what the building is looking like, and Mandelli, if you can go back to the, the plan view, just a couple other things to point out. The main utility connections will occur on the northeast corner, so sewer and water is, is coming out of the northeast corner. We will have utility, highly occupancy permits to obtain. We will have utility highway occupancy permits to obtain with PennDOT because of the Prince Street, PennDOT roadway situation. And then on the building there, you can see the green portions. There is a vegetated roof that's a part of the stormwater management for the project. And this will be on a large portion of the, the roof. We actually had several meetings with the staff regarding stormwater management. And we came to, I think, a really good solution where, you know, obviously some of these areas of impervious cover, you can't capture on the fringes, logistically on the building roof. You know, you have areas of utilities and that type of thing. You can't necessarily put green roof on every single square foot. And per the city, the public portion of the project, which is the pass-through park, is actually exempt from stormwater management. So what we did is we looked at the impervious coverage, we looked at the vegetated roof. There's actually a 48-inch pipe that's gonna be underground, under the pass-through park that's gonna serve as stormwater management for those areas that can't be captured. So there's a portion of the roof that's gonna be sent to that, that 48-inch pipe. There's gonna be a portion of the public park, even though it's not required, to offset some of the other things. So that the goal was that there's a net zero increase in impervious coverage, which we achieved with this design. And again, it took a lot of back and forth with city staff, but we landed on, on that. That's gonna be a slow release project, or stormwater management solution that's gonna go then discharge into the pipe and Water Street, the combined sewer. And that was a result of the geology testing we did early on, where the geology wasn't the best, has a lot of parts in the city that's a karst geology. There's areas very close to adjoining buildings that if we were to do stormwater management from an infiltration standpoint, it wouldn't be a good situation. So we got a recommendation from our geologist and kinda worked through that with the city as well. So where we're at in the process, before I turn it over with questions, we will be at the shade tree commission, I believe, at the end of November here. We will have a utility HOP for the connections. We're back to the Historical Commission for a final time, hopefully here in December. And then we're also in a sewer module process with DEP to account for the additional EDUs that are required. Bicycle parking, I did not mention, we know it's one per five residents. The majority is actually in a bike room that's located, I believe, near that secondary access off of the park. Yeah. So there's a bike room that's gonna be for that. There's, there's also bicycle parking that's proposed along Prince Street to accommodate the rest of the, I think there's 15 required, we're proposing 16 in total. So that's an overview of, you know, what this project entails. And I'll take questions or comments from the planning commission at this point.
All right. I really like a lot of the concepts that are on the plan, especially the pass-through park. My first question is why put the pass-through park on the south side instead of the north side?
Well, I think that's, I mean... What's, what's driving your question? It was, it was kind of a more building design related and where it made sense to cross between the two is where we, where we're looking at it.
Okay. Yeah, cuz like where my head is at is that I realize it's not immediately in line with the West Marion Streets. It would be nice to see it on the north side cuz it, it's far enough away from the corner that it could justify mid-block crossing.
Yeah, so we, we went through that whole, and that's a good point. We went through the whole mid-block crossing with the staff and went round and round about that. So a couple of things with that. Marion Streets and Alley not necessarily a high pedestrian use per se. And the big impediment to a crossing there, if you look at the, I'm not gonna be able to point at this, Mandelli, you're gonna have to help me. Below where it says west, there's a box up on West Marion Street, up in the upper right-hand corner. Keep going up, right, across the street, like it's over, there you go, right there. So that's a historical building, right, the historical preservation building. And there's obviously steps there, we can't change those. There's a whole lot of things happening grade-wise where we could not even provide an adequate ADA ramp situation that PennDOT would have to approve. So that was a big challenge. And again, we talked to this staff about all this, all this stuff. The other reason for the south side is there are new restaurant owners, or not owners, I think they're leased, they're gonna be leasing for restaurant business on the south side.
Okay.
Part of what happens right now, which I'm, I'm sure you're aware, is they utilize a little bit of that space for some tables that are out there. There's a potential, and we're actually meeting with the neighboring property owner soon here, to, you know, could they put some tables out there? So again, from that standpoint, we could keep that space open, have that, you know, pedestrian-friendly, and rather than smacking a building right up against that, we thought this is the best situation to accommodate both.
Okay. Yeah, that's pretty much all I had. I mean, we'll see what the Historic Commission says about facade keeping. I mean, me personally, I'm the type of person who says, while I love the Watten Shan Building, sometimes it's more expensive and big ass to maintain a facade. But generally speaking, I'm really loving the concept and I appreciate the pass-through park.
Just to comment on the pass-through park, one of the things we have to do, there is some refinement yet to be done in the design. We have things on the land development plan. We are currently looking at the lighting plan that'll be submitted to the city. One of the things that we're very aware of is this needs to be a safe space, obviously, for everyone. Residents, anyone in the city. So we need to pay attention to carefully to the lighting, you know, landscaping we looked at and so that there's no necessarily hiding places and that type of thing. Those two areas of plant, plantings that are happening on both sides of the pass-through park are actually small planters. So it makes a nice space in through there, but they're not, you know, people aren't gonna be walking through those areas. And so we're trying to make it so, you know, there's no, no opportunity or very limited opportunity to hide and that type of thing. So we are, we do realize that this needs to be a safe space. We talked to the staff about potential cameras and that type of thing. So that's definitely top of mind when we're looking at, at that, at this space.
You know, I'm glad you did mention something cuz I will, cuz there are, there are gonna be windows on the south side of the building facing the park, right?
There are.
All right, cuz I think that's gonna do wonders for the safety. Jane Jacobs, you know, eyes-on-the-street concept, so yeah, thank you for thinking of safety.
Yeah, and, and again, I think there's, there are windows where the retail wraps around as well because again, we want that engaging space to happen. But the same situation, you're gonna have a visual there, so.
Where will, like, deliveries or drop-offs happen? I know Prince Street is a little busy, so just curious about that.
Prince Street's a little busy. So the intent is really for the Water Street side. And if you look at the, where the two arrows are on the west side of the building, that's more of a loading or delivery area. So if you have someone moving in, that's the opportunity to, to get into the building from that side. It's really not on the Prince Street side, it's on the Water Street side.
I follow up question on that. So I'm just thinking with Water Street becoming a bike boulevard in the next couple of years, is there another solution for, for loading zone or, cuz you're gonna be blocking bike traffic?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's limited, I mean, you're kind of stuck on all areas. We think the best solution is really where you have less traffic, less congestion on the Water Street side. And again, with the public park, there's not opportunity there. And the same with the north side, so it's kinda limited to where that could occur. We, we just think that's the best spot for the time that happens. Amos, they'll have cargo bikes for delivery.
There you go. There you go. Oh, and sorry, one more question. Have you talked about a, a mid-block crossing across Water Street from the, the pass-through park to get over to Lake Zootropolis? Are you expecting pedestrians to go down to the crosswalk?
So again, this is one where the intersection's really not that far away. We don't think necessarily a mid-block is a good solution from a safety perspective. So, you know, we, we think that where there are current crosswalks is gonna be a better solution to get someone safely across.
I got a crazy idea over here. We're mentioning drop-off zones for stuff. Has there been any thought or conversation with Lancaster Parking Authority in utilizing like maybe a section of the entranceway in their parking structure for people to do their business like that?
There is not.
Okay.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Are you in conversations with the parking authority to secure parking spaces for the residents that will live in this building?
I don't know if there's, Kirk, has there any been any conversation about that?
The last time we talked with them, it was about a year and a half.
Would you mind walking up to the podium, please? Thank you.
The last time I talked with them, about a year and a half ago, there was a lot of spaces available, but they could not commit spaces at that time. And we weren't in a position to rent them long-term. So, but I don't think there's a requirement for dedicated parking, so. So I don't know, I haven't checked since about a year and a half ago.
Is that something that you think you'll look into again for the residents?
I'm sorry, say again, please?
Is that something you think you would look into again for the residents as the building comes more to fruition?
We have not talked about that, so at this point, to provide parking along with a, with a unit, so.
Yeah, there's also the Water Street garage, it's like a block away, so. I mean, I'm sure there's plenty of parking.
I actually wanted to take a second to just applaud any time we do see a surface parking lot activated into something else, especially residential, how that fits what every one of us on this commission, I would believe, wants. And North Water Street is the perfect place to activate that. And I can't wait to see how the mayor's plan for pedestrian and all these other modes of transportation is gonna work together because, oh my gosh, this is great, it's a good step. That might be too enthusiastic for the, you know, the methods of our commission, but thank you.
Good feedback, thank you.
This is a step in the right direction, can't wait to see what comes up next.
I don't know, I'm really gonna miss that pop-up park. Anybody else have any question?
I'm just, I'm curious about the, the rental rates for the apartments. Do you have a sense of what those will be?
I'm gonna have to ask Kirk about that.
It's a little over, between, last time we looked at it, between two and 220 a square foot, so.
And how many, what's like the average square footage?
I think the smaller units are around a thousand and it goes up to maybe 1,500. Maybe 1,550, I think, for the, for the upstairs ones.
And I just have one question about the trees along Water Street. The in lieu of, I'm assuming that's because, is there not room for them or why?
Yeah, there's not. I mean, it's, if you, there's sidewalk there now, the building's gonna come out to the right-of-way. Like I said, the challenge is getting to the door locations, getting accessibility, making sure they're ADA accessible and having to deal with people walking out in such a narrow area is the main reason. There's some utility conflicts as well, but it's really not conducive to that at all.
And trash, where will trash be picked up?
It, it's similar to what I've talked about, the loading, that's in that service area.
Okay, that's what I assumed. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, with that, we'll wrap up. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. You too have a great evening. And with that, I'll let Nelson take over from here. We're jumping in right on number four. Yep.
Number four, redevelopment authority of the city of Lancaster, none. Number five, other business?
Mr. Schenck, you don't have any other businesses?
No other business? Any public comment and/or participation? Yes, Mr. Bill.
Good evening, Bill Hannigan, 300 block of College Avenue. I appreciate that this commission talked at length tonight about trees and the Catherine Hershey School and how it creates an environment, an aesthetic that is very essential. This commission met and discussed October 4th and talked about tree protection in relation to 213 College Avenue. This issue, the issue I advocate for is the denial or revocation of tree work permits for the proposed development of 213 College Avenue. Can I expect a response to the letter I wrote October 9th? This was dated October 9th and at that time, my thought was to approach Mr. Andurer, the city arborist. Am I incorrect that this letter was formatted, forwarded from the city arborist to the interim urban forester to the planning commission?
I don't think that it should come to the planning commission for the tree removal, right? Is it for tree removal?
This is what I was told, but my last conversation was with the urban forester, that the letter was now deemed to be the responsibility of the planning commission. And if not, I would proceed.
I will check with my colleague.
So it hasn't, as far as you know.
So I have no full picture of the request.
Well, that's, that's regrettable. I asked the opportunity to recap the letter's conclusion based on the subdivision and land development ordinance. May I have permission? I'll try to be brief. Sections 27310 and 27317, under the heading Tree Protection, are what I would focus on. The conclusion that I drew from what I observed was these are trees at 655, 657, and 659 West Chestnut, in my mind, are all one. This is a broad view of those trees. The canopies are interlaced, the drip zones are interlaced, the root structure are interlaced. That's how they've been developing for decades. And what we heard October 4th was that the developer wants to go into 657 and claw six feet into that property to a tree that has a 14-inch diameter. And it's between two trees that have plus 24-inch diameters. Those are protected trees by SADO. There's no... Let me, let me just refer back to what I would like to state. The trunk of the tree at 657, which is between the two protected trees, is within the tree protection zone of the adjacent trees exceeding the 24-inch diameter criteria for tree protection. Of the adjacent trees, one is a rare American elm and reportedly having a 38-inch diameter. The trunk of the tree at 657, in between the two, is within the drip line plus five feet criteria for the adjacent protected trees. The root system of the tree at 657 must be considered entangled with the root systems of the adjacent protected trees. Encroachment six feet inside the fence at 657 West Chestnut cuts into the trees, and here I mean T-R-E-E-S, three, cuts into the tree's tree protection zone, drip line plus five feet and roots possibly more than two inches in diameter. That's how my letter concluded. May I add this today? This conclusion is based on observations not influenced by personal feelings or opinions. This conclusion determines a course of action according to a set of routine or sound practices that are just a part of SADO. I would say that I've come before public bodies for three years now and I find the only thing I can stand on is SADO. That's my whole focus now. If I can find it in SADO, I can come here and speak to you about it in these non-judgmental, objective terms. So if I may continue a little bit more, bear with me, thank you. I have a letter from Benchmark Construction that was received by a property owner at 657 prior to the October 4th meeting. And this letter says they wanna start digging at the end of this month. This is before HDC, which is a nonprofit organization, is anywhere near in my... This is before HDC, which is a nonprofit organization, is anywhere near, in my opinion, fulfilling the 11 conditions that were set forth in their conditional use to proceed with this project. And they have just the month of December to close the gap on those things that are outstanding, unresolved. And here they want to start already tearing into this property at 657. I hope I've been able to help you understand that taking this core piece, the centerpiece of 657, and doing excavation is a threat to that tree and the protected trees on both sides. Seeing this go forward, seeing this get approval to me is just to be disregarding of the sections of SADO that I cited. I would just ask to take one more minute. Today's editorial page talked about our future Lancaster, which is very complimentary, and said it includes hundreds of recommendations. This is the plan meant to be phased in over the next 20 years. What are we going to sacrifice in 20 years if we let this happen? The removal of these trees and the construction of 213 College Avenue, which is just simply too big for that property. It's oversized for that property. This editorial goes on to say that Lancaster is grappling with a structural budget deficit, and the, there's a commission forum now that is studying the possibility of drafting a home rule charter. Why? Because they want to look at how taxes may be raised or levied apart from state guidelines. And it goes on to say, the city can only control its property tax, and because so much property tax is occupied by nonprofits, that's a narrow revenue structure or source. Here, I think, the Milton Hershey School might fall into that as a non-public entity. I think the 118 North Prince Street is the kind of development they're looking for, because it, I believe, not a, I'm a layman, but I believe that's going to be the source of more revenue comparatively than the Hershey School or the 213 College Avenue. And just to background it again, September 21st, September 21st, 2022, the HDC was identified in Lancet newspapers as a nonprofit. So here we are, back before a nonprofit, wanting to proceed as the owner or developer of 213 College Avenue. And this will add another property with a with a narrow tax revenue source, or as a narrow tax revenue source. These are the ways I find fault with 213 College Avenue. I respectfully submit my comments to you. If I could get a response to my October 9th letter, I'm looking to see that I don't run into staff discretion, which I did recently in another case that I objected to, and that's the, that's the development of the former St. Joseph Hospital. I want to see that I'm not running into a comment that the interim urban forester said, where possible. This is a valid piece of the code, this is another valuable piece of the code, and this interim urban forester added, where possible. I don't want to run into that. I want to think that 20, 30 years from now, someone could say, this board stood its ground and upheld SADO. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the city staff will look at Mr. Hannigan's request thoroughly, and with, we'll discuss with the rest of the city staff, and we'll report back to you soon.
Okay.
Including you, Mr. Hannigan.
Come on.
Hi, Beth Bade, I'm at 655 West Chestnut, and I'm at one of the properties where the tree is being talked about, the protected American elm tree. Again, I have been dealing with Cody Kiefer, the urban forester, and now he's not there, there's an interim. Bill Hannigan and I have, you know, worked a lot together. We really, you know, this is coming up in December, where they're going to come up again to see if they've met all their 11, you know, things they're supposed to do for you. We want some kind of response, you know, as what's going on. I don't want to show up in December and all of a sudden, you know, my tree is going to be cut down because no one's gotten in touch with me about it. So thank you.
Any further comment, public?
Mr. Chairman, may I weigh in a little bit here?
Yes.
Because I just want to make it clear that, like, so, obviously, the last meeting, I had my own concerns. And I'm directing this way if, because my understanding is that the, there has been no determination from the Shade Tree Commission on whether or not they've met that condition. That's kind of a bi-directed question. So that's where my concern is at, is that if the developer, like, what, like, how the developer aims to meet that condition of approval, because right now, this is out of our hands unless they can't meet that condition, and then they need to come back for an extension. So I think that's where we really get involved again, is if they can't meet that condition of approval, which seems to be the ground. And then to you guys, if, there is something legal to be said about that. If if something can't be met and it's in the city ordinances, there is an argument to be had. I'm not a lawyer, but there is an argument to be had about whether or not the ordinances have been followed, and, like I said, that would be a court issue at that point, then.
I don't know whose responsibility it would be to engage in a court.
Hopefully, it doesn't get to that.
You, you do recall, the mayor or so, HDC faced a lawsuit, and they said, okay, we want 300, we want $3 million set aside from you, the opponents of our cause. So it's kind of like a real pushback to say, if our project can't go forward, we're going to sock you for $3 million.
Sure.
So they've got deep pockets, and I'm sure they've figured out a strategy, or we'll figure out a strategy again. So I don't know who's suggesting, I'm not suggesting legal, mine, okay?
Right, I'm just saying hypothetically.
I am standing on SADO. Now, my conversation with the, if I may just hear, please hear me, my conversation with the interim urban forester was, no permit for tree work has been requested. This will not be a subject of the Shade Tree Commission, at least in the sense you have to have an application to, or you have to file to address the Shade Tree, get on the Shade Tree Commission agenda two weeks ahead of time. Well, we only learned about this October 4th, and October 9th, when I could clear my to-do list and get this letter filed and talk with Mr. Andurer, he said, well, you don't, you can't meet the 14-day deadline, and we're not going to meet anyway. So the Shade Tree Commission course that I tried to do, pursue, ended up going nowhere. I'm afraid that in the meantime, my letter is sitting somewhere and not addressed, so that's why I'm here tonight. I may not have another chance to speak about 213 College Avenue before this board has to make a final decision on whether or not they've met those 11 conditions. I don't think the Shade Tree Commission is going to to weigh in on that.
Okay.
So it's, it's really here, it's right here before you, as I understand it.
And as was mentioned earlier, that we will look into the situation.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. As much before the next meeting is possible, I realize you may not, this commission may not meet again in November. So, you know, this, this month could fly by, and, you know, I'm not left, I have no answer to the questions I've raised in that letter and today, before you meet again. And that's, that's really, it's the second biggest reason why I lose sleep at night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? We'll set a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Ready for the question? All in favor, that known by saying aye? Aye. Aye, aye, aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Pose, eyes have it, meeting adjourned at 6:00.